Good morning and welcome. It's Rochester today. We're back from the holiday on Monday. I'm Andy Brownell, News Talk thirteen forty, KROC AM ninety six nine FM. And it is already time again to get together with Rochester Mayor Kim Norton. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing well. Little full still from the holiday.
Of course, we all overeat.
At least I didn't have to travel this year. So that's always something I was thankful for.
Safe and safe at home.
Exactly. And warm as well, considering we finally have cold weather after a wonderful fall.
I know. I've had two days with a winter coat on. I was trying to not have to wear it.
Yeah, we got away with it last year.
But we have to wear it this week.
Well, since we talked last, we've had an election. And the result of that election is a significant change of personnel, I guess, on the Rochester City Council, including the election of a new city council president. Kim, have you had a chance to meet the incoming council members?
I have. It's been a pleasure to to get to know them. I think one of the things that's noteworthy, of course, is this is four new members on the council, and that happened one other time four years ago where we had a large shift like this. So it's always interesting to see what this new group thinks and feels moving ahead. Do they is the strategic plan going to be the same? Of course, the administration is already working on setting up a timing time that they can reflect on the strategic goals and see if they want to make changes or continue on. And you know, I'm sure there's a little angst on their part as they've been working for four years, you know, given one direction. Will it change significantly or not? I suspect we'll see some changes from this council, but I don't think they'll be drastic. So the the four new members have been and the returning members have been attending a new council onboarding and orientation. So that's been really interesting. That happened the eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth of November and will continue, of course, as they learn moving into their swearing in ceremony in January. But we want to make sure they know the people in the departments, the directors and what their jobs are, right? You can imagine how it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose. Right? So that was a really interesting orientation, lots of good questions and and learning. I mean, I think those of us Norman Wall, Patrick Keane, Sean Palmer and myself that attended bits and pieces of those over the course of those three days learned new things too. There's, you know, in a city with so many employees and so much going on, there's never a shortage of new things to learn. So it was really a good time for all of us to get to know each other a little bit. And you you may or may not be aware, but the City of Rochester has been using the Gala, it's Gallup, but it's called Strengths Finders tool to get to know the things that people care about, the way they work. What kind of themes and domains do individuals have that we can understand? So we understand each other. And so we did a little bit of that.
Is this one of those things where you decide what kind of animal you are?
No, it's not animal. But it is a similar process where, you know, you fill out a lengthy survey and then we sit down with the consultant, Bethany Von Steinberg, and she helps us understand and each other and how we work. You know, the I talk about this and even cities new member orientations, my strongest strength is is responsibility. And so for me, and I think I'm the only one that has that is the top strength. And there's only one other person I think that has response or two other people have responsibility in their top five. It really drives its kind of decision making that I make. And when people understand that I'm doing things because I have a real sense of responsibility, it helps and it has helped the past board understand a little bit about where I come from. And so same, you know, the same thing is true of all of us as we understand each other's strengths. And then we can say, okay, they're saying that because positivity or belief or whatever the different categories, there's thirty of them. But that's how that person thinks and works. So it's it's a, you know, we had a good team building exercise with that. So hopefully that will help us when January rolls around and we have our swearing in, we're ready to go.
I imagine from a person coming onto this, you know, you you decide to run for a leadership position in your community and usually there's an issue or two or three or four tied to your decision. And then when you sit down in that seat as a voting member and are find yourself dealing with issues that might not align with the reasons you ran in the first place, but it's it's part of the job, right? I mean,
Oh, absolutely.
That's gonna be kind of daunting.
Yeah. And you saw during the campaign, you know, the issues were the same when I ran. The issues have not changed in the last six years, really. Housing, of course, is something we talk a lot about. But the city doesn't build housing. The city approves housing developments. And so while you may have a passion, for instance, for getting new housing, we have limited ways we can do that. And certainly, you know, supporting some of the housing concepts that are coming is one of them, but very few people don't support housing. So again, you may have a passion for something. We all care about that issue, but it's not like the city council says, well, let's go build four buildings. We don't, we have land that we can offer. We have tax increment financing that we could offer to someone who will build the kind of housing, senior housing or low income housing that we may want. But we don't actually build buildings as a city. And so to your point, you you campaign on one thing and you find out that the two or three top issues you have don't come up all that often, but a lot of other things do come up. And and there's a learning curve to that. So it'll be interesting. And I've and I've said for years, whether it was school board, legislature or city council, the campaigning process is very different than the decision making and leadership process. And that does, to your point, take some getting used to that shift from campaigning and telling everyone what you think and the day to day decision making that you have when projects or ideas or policy come before you on a council. So it's interesting. It'll be an interesting time.
Plus, you know, you mentioned it was just four years ago. You had a major recall or overhaul of the city council. Now going through that again, you as mayor, how difficult is that from your perspective to, you know, nor less got to know the last group, now you have to get to know a whole new group and start over.
You do. And I would say the first thing to remember is people are all running for the council because they care about our city. So that's the good news, right? All of us that have run for office care about the community, the people who live here in the city and really want the best for us. So that's the good news. We don't always agree a hundred percent on on policy or decisions. And that's the process of, you know, leadership and city council. So we'll, we'll work our way through that over the year. But I can give you a really good example of something. It's one of my few vetoes that I did as mayor. And it was four, it was almost four years ago now where the City of Rochester had purchased some land behind the government center for a developer who wanted to come in and they wanted, you know, they wanted that whole stretch of land. So it's the behind Indigo or the old Holiday Inn. There's a parking ramp. There's some land there, parking lot, and then there were the two buildings over on Fourth Avenue. And the city owns all that and had purchased it to make it a buildable plot for a developer. Well, that developer during the pandemic backed off and said, well, we're not going to do that after all. So the city owns that land. And the city council had determined that the buildings were old. They weren't worth, they weren't inhabitable really for any purposeful use. And they wanted to demolish them. And the city council voted to demolish those. That was in November, December. In January, four new members came on and they chose to save those two buildings around Fourth Avenue. And as someone who had been around for the past vote, who had told the community, and again, this is my responsibility side. And, and, you know, being truthful and having integrity as a leader is important to me. So I had told the community, as we all had at that time, that the buildings were going to be torn down and that that site would be redeveloped. And in fact, I had gone to a I had been selected to be a mayor to go to a conference or an event. It's called the Mayor's Institute on City Design. I had taken that property and had taken it to a group of architects and developers to find out what we could do with it. And I was really excited about the possibilities. And 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 here the new council was saying, we've decided to keep those properties. So, you know, the ideas are moot. And I felt a sense of responsibility, having told the community it was being torn down, that we had plenty of documentation showing that the city had purchased it with the sole purpose of tearing it down. And that I didn't want to be seen as being dishonest to the people who had been told they had to leave the building, right, as it got torn down. And that affected people's businesses. And I felt really bad about that. And so when they voted to save them, I vetoed it. And they overrode it. So I said, okay, that's on you guys then, right? I'm going to stand by my position and you can stand by yours. But, you know, what I had been told by the previous administration, the city councils, that they were to be torn down, and I'm going to stand by that. So, you know, things change. Well, now we have four years later and could things change again? So there is that question from my perspective that, you know, are we going to head in the same direction or not? I'm hopeful that we will. But of course, things like that can happen where the councils decided on something and a new council can come in and say, we have a different feeling.
Particularly particularly with the new city council president again.
Yes.
Because they they have that ability to, I guess, what steer the agenda.
Well, they have a limited ability. I would say that's one thing that surprised me in city government. And the school board items get on the agenda because the superintendent and the board chair has determined they're in agreement that the items should be brought forward. I think here we see less of that. I think the administration does more driving of agenda items than the council president does. If the council president, you know, because of the open meeting law, it's very difficult for a council president to know how the majority of her board will vote because you can't talk in advance. It it it's hard being that board chair or board president because you have to either believe you understand the the direction that the council is going because of previous votes or, you know, decisions. But you really, it's the administration who drives much of the agenda. So unless they set policy otherwise, of course. So it'll be interesting. I'm excited for the new council. It's always an interesting time, but that's democracy. So here we go.
Yeah, at a very, I guess, what you'd call intimate level when you're electing city leaders whom you can actually pick up the phone and talk with on a you know, personal basis or go to a council meeting in an address, it's I guess grassroots is probably the best way to describe it. It's what makes the the whole thing work.
Absolutely. And and I hope people that are listening understand that that they do have an ability to write or email or talk to their council members and mayors about issues that they care about. That that is what representative democracy is about. And it doesn't mean you always get your way, of course, because the council member has to weigh one person's opinion with, you know, citywide, a hundred and twenty four thousand other people, right? But it is our responsibility to listen and try to understand the will of the community at large. And and that's hard. It is hard.
Well, we'll find out come January, what direction the council will go on a variety of issues. It'll be interesting. All right, we'll take a quick break. We're with Rochester Mayor Kim Norton this morning, our weekly get together on Rochester Today at News Talk thirteen forty, KROC AM and ninety six. Good morning. Welcome back. It's Rochester Today. We're with Rochester Mayor Kim Norton on News Talk thirteen forty, KROC AM and ninety six nine FM. And Mayor, since the last time we spoke, this one actually caught me by surprise. I totally forgot that Fire Chief Eric Kurska had announced his retirement earlier this year. And suddenly the Fire Civil Service Commission was selecting the new fire chief. That's a that's quite a change all of a sudden. It's a position that doesn't turn over very often.
It does not. You're correct. It was it was actually a long time in the coming as Chief Kurska, as you pointed out, gave the city, I don't think it was quite a year, but almost maybe noticed that that he intended to retire. So it gave us a long time to go through the HR process and and it snuck up on a lot of us. A gentleman named Mason Poohler was hired by the screened by human resources, of course, and then ultimately selected by the the Fire Civil Service Committee and brought brought forward. He will start on January sixth of this year. And there'll be a couple of weeks of crossover where Chief Poohler and Chief Kurska will be joint chiefs, not of staff, but just joint chiefs, fire chiefs. And they will work together to do that sharing and learning for those weeks as Chief Kurska prepares to retire on or around the seventeenth of the month. So yeah, it's it's an interesting time. And I sense a really positive vibe from the department about the the new hire. They had a an opportunity where the firefighters and other staff, I went for part of it, were able to meet him. He came to town and just did an open kind of Q and A and talked about his service and his history and then answered questions. And it went very well and people were leaving seemingly pleased. So I'm looking forward to what's to come. And we'll have a going away party for the chief, for Chief Kurska.
Well, we'll have to tell Chief Kurska to present the new fire chief with like a Minnesota Vikings jersey or something like that, because I imagine where he's coming from that he's probably a Packers fan.
Yeah, he might be a Packers fan and that could be, that could be interesting. But yeah, maybe we'll see a little bit of that happen.
Remarkable to me how much longevity that position holds because it seems to be like it wasn't that long ago that it was Chief Mertz, but that was eons ago. That was probably before you arrived in the city.
Could have been. And, you know, I think that happens with our chief of police and chief of fire too. Historically, anyway, those types of positions, and I will just say not even city administrators in the past. We'll see what happens. You know, we've had a little bit of shift here in the last ten to fifteen years, but people would take those jobs and have them for, I don't want to say a lifetime, but for, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years with city administration.
Steve Quinbold, yeah.
Steve Quinbold, that's right. And Dick Devlin over in the county. People had positions like this and and really, you know, got into them and stayed in them for a long period of time. And I think, you know, today's younger people don't stay in jobs quite as long as maybe historically, but we do hope for chiefs of fire, chiefs of police and city administrators to stay long enough to build the trust and the you know, kind of the institutional, you have some, you gain some institutional knowledge, but also you you own the policy and the direction, the strategic direction that the elected officials have put you on and that, you know, then you implement it. And a lot of changeover is difficult. And we've had that in the coming, you know, the past few years and maybe yet as we're seeing now with the fire chief that will continue as some of those thirty and forty year employees are retiring. So a little turnover. A little excitement.
Institutional knowledge because especially when you look at a city administrator, it's a vast a vast system that you have to learn if you renew in that position. It'll take a while to
Nearly a thousand employees and and not that every administrator knows every employee because they do turn over some. Certainly our seasonal employees in parks and some of the other departments turn over a little, you know, more often. But that administrator needs to know her departments and her, his or her department heads very well. And and there is an institutional knowledge that can be beneficial. And, you know, at some point, though, change is good. New ideas, new innovations can improve a city. So we just have to you know, hope for, hope for that, that we have good hires. And I think we have. And so looking forward to seeing what Mason Poohler will do for the Rochester Fire Department.
All right. We'll take a quick break for news, come back with more with the mayor, Rochester Mayor Kim Norton, Rochester Today at News Talk thirteen forty, KROC AM and at ninety six news app. Good morning and welcome back. Monday morning on Rochester Today. I'm Andy Brownell, News Talk thirteen forty, KROC AM ninety six nine FM with Rochester Mayor Kim Norton. Welcome back, Kim. And got the press release last week that you have been chosen for a leadership position. It's the National League of, I'm going to say Minnesota Cities. The League of, tell me what it is.
The National League of Cities. The National League of Cities or NLC is this, the parent organization that the League of Minnesota Cities falls under. And each state has their own municipal league under NLC. So the National League of Cities, I just returned from their annual convention, their city summit, it's called. It's a city or city council members, administrators, deputy and department heads, city council people. So just returned from that. And yeah, was really pleased to have been selected. I served as vice chair of the Human Development Committee for a couple of years. Or for the last year, I guess, and served on the committee, served on that committee for several years. And the new incoming president selected me to be chair of that committee. So it is the federal advocacy chair of the human development area of policy. So I'm the federal advocacy chair. And as such, I am also a board member of the National League of Cities. So I'm very excited about the next year working with cities who are I mean, cities are the place where we react, you know, we're most close to the people. So we react to what the people in the community want, you know, set local policy. And the National League of Cities looks more at what are cities doing? And how can we make sure that the federal government's policies align with the desires of the cities rather than run counter to them? So that will be my role.
Okay, that's gotta be really a hard task to represent on a national scale, considering the vast differences between cities in one part of the country and another, as far as what their needs are and perhaps what the community's desires might be. Is that
Well, you'd be surprised at how similar city governments are. You know, we gather as twice a year, once in Washington DC for for federal advocacy and then once in the summer summit. And small and large cities in every part of the country are grappling with housing issues, are grappling with workforce issues, are grappling with homelessness, drug addiction and mental illness. So that there's more, far more similarity than differences. And I think that's the joy of city government as opposed to federal and state government, sometimes where partisanship gets in the way of decision making. And you, and of course, you know, the polarization of the country partisan wise has really happened. But when it comes to those bread and butter issues that people have to deal with in their homes, we're more alike than we are different. And so we are, we try to influence a federal government to say, don't usurp the authority of local governments to make decisions that are best for their own people. So to your point, if there are differences, why should the federal government get in the way of a city being able to make the decisions on zoning or housing or, you know, the issues that I that I mentioned, why should they dictate to us? Why won't the people who live here in this community, who know the community, be the authorities and make the decisions that are best? And so we're forever looking at the federal government saying, well, you're starting to delve into issues that really should be decided at a local level. Stay out of that area. And so that's what we'll be doing for the next year. And, you know, we set the policy, of course, that all the members do. And we have a very broad membership that sets the policies that we advocate for. So we have to come to agreement on those or it's not in our agenda.
Okay, in your area as the chair, will be human development. What does that encompass?
It's huge. It's probably, it does not do, we have, you know, an environment and energy committee. We have a public safety committee. So we don't deal directly with that, but we do deal with veterans issues. We deal with housing. We deal with childcare. The list goes on and on. It is, it is a very extensive, it has a very extensive list of issues. I don't have it in front of me, but the the document that I took to convention to discuss is very, very thick. Very, very thick. So, yeah, so we, it took us, I think, thirty or forty hours to go through the policies from the human development division for to make suggestions for changes, to add, you know, to amend them, to add new topics. Our committee met for thirty to between thirty and forty hours before convention so that we could, you know, have that policy book for the body to vote on. So and and all those were approved. But so it takes a lot of thought and time and negotiation to set those policies. That's fascinating.
How many people on your committee then?
It's different every year. Typically, the committee will have maybe thirty five or forty members.
Okay, so it's quite large.
Yes, and it covers the whole country. And the people, like, we all have to reapply every year. I served on the Energy and Environment Committee my first two or three years as mayor. We were meeting, of course, remotely for part of that, setting energy and environment policy. But I personally found they got into the weeds a little bit too much for me, that a lot of the people that serve on that have a passion for it, as do I on in a high level. They deal into, they deal with things that get into the point oh oh six millimeters of something, right? It was just too technical for my, I just, I started, you know, getting frustrated with the level of, and I'm glad someone knows it. It just wasn't where I wanted to go. I prefer to stay high level in my policy setting. So I switched to human development a number of years ago and have really loved it. It's so broad.
Okay, with this broad umbrella of issues that this committee and your leadership position deal with, as chair, is there anything you want to focus on during your tenure in this position?
Well, you will be probably not terribly surprised to know that education and child, child and youth issues are important to me. I mean, I started my public service on the school board for ten years for a reason. I have a degree in education and special education. So it's an area I care deeply about. So that falls in that realm. And workforce, which I've been working on quite a bit as mayor, looking at entrepreneurship, inclusive, inclusive entrepreneurship. That falls in that realm too. So really looking forward, in fact, an issue I need to deal with later today is contacting our federal legislators about some amended changes on the the WIOA, the workforce bill that they're passing at the federal level. There's some things that are concerning to cities that that would potentially hurt cities ability to to play a good role in in workforce issues. I'll be sending a letter out to to the senators about that because they're going to maybe do work on that before the session ends in the Lindesque session.
With this leadership position and your role with the the league, does that does that increase your access to perhaps people within the administration?
Yes, it does and will. And I see that as an advantage for our community because while I'm there doing the advocacy work for the National League of Cities, of course, I can certainly take some time out to to continue to have visits with our congresspeople, Representative Finstad, Senator Smith and Senator Klobuchar, as well as spend like spend time with on our grants, grant applications. And I was able to do that this past week when I was in Washington DC for a meeting, I was able to go and talk to the staff about several of the grants that we are hoping that we can have approved before the Lindesque session ends and the new administration takes over. Department of Transportation and Department of Energy, Energy in particular.
The energy, is that dealing with the
EV chargers.
Oh, really? Okay, I was thinking the heat situation for all the government buildings downtown, but
Well, I will tell you, there is a little bit of angst that I'm feeling if the new administration comes in and decides to pull out of their support for the IRA legislation because we have a lot of money resting on the direct spending, the the tax credit that we will be getting back and have counted on as we've moved ahead. You have to be able to count on the federal government to fulfill what it says it will do. And I'm a little nervous. I'm just holding my breath that they they, once, you know, a city has started I'm just holding my breath that they, they, once, you know, a city has started projects based on what we're told that they will not pull the rug out from under us. So we will see.
All right. Okay, but we'll have to watch for updates on that, that's for sure, is we actually find out what will happen come January with the changeover of a new government.
Exactly.
Okay, we'll take a break. We're with Rochester Mayor Kim Norton. This is Rochester Today, News Talk 1340 KROC AM and 96.
Probably.
It's Rochester Today, Monday morning with Rochester Mayor Kim Norton. I'm Andy Brownell and you're listening to News Talk 1340 KROC AM and 96.9 FM. Mayor, I saw on the official mayor's Facebook page or whatever you want to call it, that's social media site, that you have a, or at least you're promoting a contest involving kids and your job. Maybe you could explain.
I'd love to. This is an annual competition, if you will, that the, that the League of Minnesota Cities, we were just talking about the National League of Cities, this is our affiliate, the League of Minnesota Cities. And they do this mayor for a day essay contest. And they've been doing it for years and years. It's a, there's a hundred dollar prize and they select winners. We actually have had winners in the past, but it's for students in fourth, fifth or sixth grade this year. And they answer the question about, you know, if you were mayor for a day, what would you do? And so fascinating to hear from children. Clearly, many of them, in some of the essays I've read in the past, have had some really interesting conversations with their parents about, you know, what do mayors do or maybe teachers? What do mayors do? What things do you have, does a mayor have control over? I'm not even sure sometimes everybody understands that. They have good discussions and then they dream, right? If I were that mayor, what would I do? And so then they, they turn their essays in, they have to be postmarked by December 13th. And they send them to the League of Minnesota Cities and they can contact our office if anyone is interested in putting an application in or getting a link. Our staff could certainly send that to you, but it's also been posted online on the city's website and Facebook and other places. So it's a really, it's, it really is heartwarming. I think we had a lot.
So they don't go directly through your office? You don't get to see them before they go to the League of Minnesota?
No, I only see them afterward if we have finalists or winners. And a lot of the ones that I did read, even since I've been mayor, so the last six years, have a lot of them have focused on homelessness. So I think it is clear that, that children in our community be, see and feel the homeless individuals in our community and feel a, a real need to make sure that they're okay and offer services. So a lot of them have covered that. But there have been others. We had one winner a number of years ago. We invited him over to City Hall and we brought a fire truck and a snowplow out front. So he could take a look at those because I think he talked about city services. So that's fun. It's, it's, it's nice to have our young people thinking about city government.
It would be fun to see the submissions that don't make the cut as well. I can imagine that there's some fairly unique ideas.
I agree. It would be great to read them all, but no, I don't get that opportunity. I do hope that if, if a classroom does it or schools do it, that they take the opportunity to share those with the, you know, the rest of the students and, and parents at some point in their school. And if they want to send them to me afterward, I'd love to see some of them because they are, they're sweet.
All right, I guess we'll be in the new year the next time we talk, I think.
That could well be. Yes, I, yes, December is upon us and we have, not only do we have Hanukkah and Christmas that folks will be celebrating. I take my annual vacation in December, at least half for the past five or six years because it's a quieter time here at City Hall. And I feel like I can sneak away and Council President Brooke Carlson steps in for me. At a, at a generally quiet time, but it makes my vacation nicer.
Once the budget is passed, which is what, next week or this week?
Yep, perhaps Monday. They're going to have.
Oh goodness, okay, so that'll be.
City council meetings this Monday and the Monday after. And I will miss that second one, but I do think it might be today.
All right, well, you have a wonderful rest of the year and enjoy the holidays, Mayor. And we'll catch up again in 2025.
And can I put a plug in for New Year's Eve Day?
You bet.
New Year's Eve Day, Mayo Civic Center is again hosting a family friendly, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM free event for the community. So bring your kids, come over to Mayo Civic Center for New Year's Eve Day. I know it seems like a long way away, but if we're not going to talk between now and then, I want folks to know that they can come have a fun day of activities at Mayo Civic Center on New Year's Eve Day.
And you can be in bed well before midnight.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it, your time and look forward to our get together next year.
Absolutely. Take care, Andy.
Rochester, Rochester Mayor Kim Norton with us. It's Rochester Today on News Talk 1340 KROC AM.